I have treated more than 500 children who have, to some degree, experienced some degree of alienation. And I've heard the heartbreaking stories of so many people here today that I've heard all before, even though I've never met one of the people who have spoken here before. Because the sagas are all the same, but only the names change. I testify all over the country to document for the presence of alienation and to critique the typical custody evaluations that miss the alienation as Dr. Miller just described. They actually do get it backwards most of the time. The alienator is viewed and deemed as the competent parent, and the targeted or alienating parent, alienated parent, is seen as an hysterical paranoid. I'm here to say that alienation does exist. I believe it is a syndrome. I wrote a book about it. And like Dr. Miller, I no longer use the word syndrome because of the controversy, but we shouldn't get stuck on labels. The American Bar Association itself published a book by Klauer and Rivlin.
Excuse me just a moment. Folks, we're having a hard time hearing the witnesses. If you need to talk, could you please take it into the hall? Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
The American Bar Association published a book written by Klauer and Rivlin that determined that alienation exists to some degree in 80 percent of all cases of divorce. They followed 700 children for 12 years to determine this. And now, the Diagnostic and Statistical Manual, number five, that was just produced this year, now documents that alienation does exist. You can find it on page 715 and 716. And they've determined that it is a dysfunctional parent-child interactional pattern, and it creates severe symptoms in the child. It also did something else. On page 719, it defines this dysfunctional family dynamic as psychological abuse of a child. And therefore, I submit that we need to treat these cases of alienation, whether mild, severe, or moderate, as a form of emotional abuse subject to CPS investigation. And if it's determined that the obsessive alienator is incorrigible, we need to treat it like any other case of child abuse. That's removal from the alienating parent, because they are abusing the child. And I documented, in my book, there is a chapter where I listed all the reasons why it is child abuse. I also want to say that the remedy has to be a form of family therapy. Individual approaches do not work. You can't bring a child into therapy and think they're going to change their parents. They are part of a dysfunctional dynamic, and you can't bring any more than you can bring one party to a peace table and think that you're going to get results. Reunification therapy will fail, and I know that from my practice, working with children and families for 40 years. If that child goes home to an obsessed, incorrigible alienator who never manages to get referred to therapy, the victims are sent to therapy, the targeted parent and the child, that makes no sense at all to me. So for one hour a week, you're going to work with two people who have been disempowered by the alienator, by the mental health professional, which 90 percent do not know how to identify this, by the court system, who are at a loss because my own profession doesn't document it for them, so how is the judicial system supposed to recognize it when the mental health community doesn't? And the alienating parent is off on the sideline. So we need to have specially trained family therapists or other mental health professionals who have had specialized training. And I do have to say, only the degree of family therapy has had this specialized training. You would be surprised that even most psychiatrists and psychological degrees don't even have Family Dynamics 101 as part of their basic training. And yet, they're evaluating family dynamics? It's a real problem. This is definitely something that's billable to the insurance companies. Because these children, and I have seen it time and again, they suffer depression, anxiety, delusional thinking, suicidal ideation, post-traumatic stress disorder. These children have symptoms. They are billable. It's a family therapy CPT code of 90847. Don't let anyone tell you it can't be billed. If they don't know this, either they're not trained and shouldn't be doing the therapy, or else they want to make the money on the side, because insurance companies don't pay that much. I've devoted my career to that. I don't take cash for these cases. I only bill for family therapy, because that's what you want to do to help people.
And could we ask you to summarize, please?
Yes. And I do believe in shared parenting. It's very important. I've heard some of the wild statements made here before. It doesn't work. Well, I direct people to the book, for example, Mom's House, Dad's House, by PhD Isalina Ricci. She suggests in her book many ways that it works. In my book, I've written why shared parenting works. Children need both parents. The obsessed alienator may be the exception. Obviously, the few exceptions, the drug abuse, the sociopaths. We're not, we're talking about shared parenting for fit parents. And by and large, most of these cases involve fit parents. We shouldn't be asking children to have to cut off a right arm or a left arm. That's what you're doing when you're asking them to choose one parent over the other. They need both parents. We must take that choice of sole custody away from parents. You know, the Scandinavian countries don't have this system. The lawyers don't make money, it's true. But they go in there and they say, "Shared parenting, make it work." It's not solved in an adversarial system, and it works. And that's what we need to start thinking here. That's what we need to do, because we're ruining a whole generation of children.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Okay, can you please just explain, or not explain, but I'm having a real difficult time with having all these different therapists saying that they do not accept insurance because there's no diagnosis code, it will be insurance fraud for them to do it. There's court-appointed people, families that go to therapists that have a PhD, they're part of the Connecticut Department of Health where they have a license to practice mental health, but they will say that they are consulting, or they are providing resources. And from everything I've heard, these families are emotionally fractured, and there's all these things. So can you explain why this is happening? And does it happen in New York, too?
I hear the same stories in New York. I have to tell you, if you read my book, every child in my book whose relationship with a parent was severed has severe emotional, behavioral, and cognitive problems. What I read, depression, anxiety, suicidal ideation, these are reimbursable insurance. If it's medically necessary, if it's medical necessity and the therapist accepts that insurance plan, they must, they must accept the insurance for their services. And the CPT code is a valid code. It's 90847 if the child is present. It's 90846 if I'm doing collateral co-parent counseling and the patient, the child is not present. And most insurance companies now do cover family therapy. So I don't know what the motives are. I don't know your therapist here. All I can tell you is, it is a valid code, and the symptoms in the kid require, the family therapy is medical necessity.
Are you aware that in the therapy associated with court-appointed therapists, they charge upwards of $375 for their 50-minute session? And they say that they're providing resources? I don't know any parent who wants to pay $375 for resources when they're in a high-conflict situation and they're paying a GAL, they're paying all these other people. They need mental health professionals that are going to help them, so...
Well, resources isn't the remedy for these symptoms. It's co-parent counseling. The word is counseling right in there. Reunification therapy, the word therapy's right in there. If they're distorting, you know, I consider it fraud what they're doing.
Go ahead, Dr. Hart.
Linda, I wonder if you could just say a little more about shared custody. When you say having two parents is good for kids, I mean, I think most people agree with that concept, but looking again at the charge for this task force, do you have some thoughts about wording in legislation that would relate to shared parenting?
Again, I believe it's in the best interest of the child to have shared parenting when you have two...
But what do you mean by that term?
I believe that it's joint legal custody, and I believe that physical custody has to approach 50/50 as close as possible. Now, we have a lot of research. There's been a lot of papers submitted in Arizona's in support of the recently passed legislation in Arizona for 50/50 shared custody. So there's no question in my mind that that's what's needed. The problem is that we give parents a choice, and this is something they shouldn't have a choice about. They're angry, I understand that. A lot of people get divorced. You're not thrilled with your former partner. You wouldn't be divorcing them. Take the choice away, and I really think we have to move from the best interests of the child to the concept of shared parenting, make it work. And like I say, in the Scandinavian countries, for example, that's the mandate, and they make it work. They have no choice. You know, when I was in school, and I'm dating myself, so please don't do the math, everyone. It was 1964, we were debating the Civil Rights Act, and it was a sociology class, and one of my students raised his hand and said, "You can't enforce morality. It'll never work, the Civil Rights Act." And my professor, Ed Sagarin, who was quite famous, I found out later, said, "You're right. We can't enforce morality, but we're not talking about morality here. We're talking about behavior." And when you have the right legislation, and it's clear that the parent, if a parent says, "I will not participate and facilitate the relationship with the other parent," well, maybe then they shouldn't have physical custody. Maybe then they give up their rights to it.
Thank you.
There need to be consequences, like for anything else. You impose the right consequences, you enforce behavior. We are a society of laws.
Thank you very much.
Well, my name is Stephen Miller. I'm a physician in Massachusetts. I have a special interest in clinical reasoning and medical decision-making, which in the past 10 or 20 years has extended into studying how mental health professionals reason and make decisions, and also extended into the issue of alienation and estrangement. So I think I'm here in part today because I counsel parents in these matters, and also because I wrote a chapter in a book which I will read you, I don't make a penny from this, Working with Alienated Children and Families, a clinical guidebook. And my chapter is on reasoning and decision-making in cases of either strong child alignment, including severe alienation or severe estrangement. I'm a medical educator. I've directed several hundred courses for continuing education purposes on clinical reasoning. And I hope, in the short time I'm here, I can take a two-day course and condense it into three minutes for you, and maybe shed a little light on how these cases go wrong. Sitting here, listening to the other witnesses, it's clear there's an epidemic. The AFCC, four years ago, held a several-day conference, international conference, devoted exclusively to parental alienation. So when national organizations are devoting several days to have speakers from numerous countries come in and speak about it, you can be sure that it's a serious problem. So getting more specific, if there was time, I would comment on some of the very good things that previous witnesses commented about, but also a couple of logical fallacies that I heard, and a couple of inaccuracies, including the idea that parental alienation syndrome, and I never used the word syndrome, but including the idea that it's either invalid or has been discredited. I'm an evidence-based medicine expert. That is untenable. It is unequivocally a phenomenon, call it whatever you'd like. So I mean that in a constructive way. I believe it's a syndrome. I just don't use the term to avoid the controversy. I also think we, what I'd hope to do is to bring a scientific view here, as some other people have done. I think it's important to distinguish between science and a belief system. One of the previous witnesses expressed the view that co-parenting has never been shown to be better than having individual custody. That's a logical fallacy. It's called an argument from ignorance. She made two other logical fallacies in a period of three minutes, and I don't mean that as a criticism. These are very common misconceptions. And finally, I'll introduce this, and try to steal another minute or two, by saying that I'm asked all the time, "How could this happen? We have the best psychologist I know, you know, guardian ad litem, attorney for the child." Oh my goodness, is that the time? And the answer is, you have a complex medical situation, and there's been no medical input. And I do not mean to imply you need a psychiatrist. What you need is a subspecialist in alienation and estrangement who sees it all the time, not the best psychologist in the world who rarely sees it. And so very briefly, the short answer to this question, "How does this happen?", is this field is highly counterintuitive to anyone who doesn't have extensive training and experience dealing with it. Most people will usually get it wrong. And when I say people, I mean attorneys, psychologists, other mental health experts. The majority of the time, they will not only get the case and the evaluation and the recommendations wrong, they will get it exactly backwards.
Dr. Miller, I need to ask you to kind of summarize, please.
Yes, I'll stop now if you'd like, but if anyone would like, I can explain what some of the counterintuitive aspects are, because I think I've heard quite a few comments about it today.
Well, I'd actually like to ask a question.
Please, please.
You were sort of talking about the, "How does this happen?" I'd be interested in hearing, and I think it's more in line with the task force's charges, to hear your suggestions on what can be done about it.
Thank you. As I said, I'm trying to condense what I think should be a two-day seminar into five minutes. First and foremost, and I mean this with utter respect, I think there's a problem with the credentials and how they use GALS here in Connecticut. As I said, I'm from Massachusetts, and I don't, I'm not a big fan of our system up there, but one thing I think they do well is that most of the GALS are mental health professionals, and there are two categories. I believe it's category E would be called a GAL evaluator, and that's a mental health profession, and most of the alienation cases, if not all of them, need that. Category F is a GAL investigator, and those are almost always attorneys. For example, should we waive privilege? That's a, I think, a question a lawyer might be better able to answer. And so there's a stratification of who does what. I also think, I'm sympathetic to the allegations that some people have been milking the system. I know that does happen. But my perspective is that there's a lack of expertise here. Even the well-intentioned people who want to do the right thing are way over their heads. Senior forensic psychologists, way over their heads in this type of a situation. I can give you very specific examples, which I would do if I had time. So I think, I think I've answered your question, but I would be happy to expand if I have the time.
Sorry, I'm not sure that you did.
Oh, I defer to you then.
Do you have, do you have some specific strategies or suggestions as to how parents who may be exercising, let us say, excessive gatekeeping, or interfering in some fashion for whatever reason with the other parent's access to the children, might be encouraged to participate more fully in the co-parenting of their child? Or any kind of suggestions regarding enforcement of the obligation to recognize the importance of the other parent in the child's life?
Well, I know you're an attorney, and I've been an expert witness many times, so technically the only answer I should give now is to say, yes, I do have some suggestions, but I'll break that rule, and I'll give you some specifics. I think the single most difficult problem here, I'm going to give you two or three. Number one is what I call severity neglect. Unless you have extensive medical training, you're not used to putting things on a severity continuum. And the idea that a parent should be more cooperative is an extremely valid and good one, but you have to ask, does the parent have the capacity to co-parent? And I find most clinical psychologists and most mental health professionals who are not subspecialists in this area simply do not know how to determine that. And one of the things to look at is the degree of psychopathology. The people who claim PA is not a syndrome will usually say, "We don't want to pathologize it." But the severe cases are fundamentally different than moderate cases. In a moderate case, it is very reasonable to try to educate the parent to be more cooperative. But in a severe case, where you have what one expert's called an obsessed alienator, that person with almost 100 percent certainty has a severe personality disorder. Normal people just don't do that to their children. And one clue would be that they block access for years on end for trivial frivolous reasons that you would never block access to your children for. Another indication or indicator would be the repeated breaching of court orders, which, again, a normal person would never do. So just to give you a glimpse of the pattern, when you see excuses like, "They don't like him, they don't want to see him, and I'm not going to force them," you should sit bolt upright in your chair. And when that's, the investigation part proves that to be the case, and then the targeted parent has not seen the children for years on end, if not months, and then there's repeated violations of clear-cut court orders, you know, "Mr. Jones, if you do this again," and he keeps doing it. Those folks are delusional. The type of personality disorder that they have, I know at least one or two of you, I think it's two of you, are clinical psychologists. I have never seen such a severe case where there wasn't what we would call a cluster B disorder, which includes four different things. That is almost 100 percent sensitive and 100 percent specific. Now, if you, so to follow up here, move on, I should say, I think that part of the solution would be training. As I said, I'm a medical educator. I think if we got the GALS together, if you had the judges have their conference, and the mental health professionals have their conference, and maybe even have some cross-training, I think a lot of these problems would evaporate. Nobody who's a real expert disputes that it exists. No one disputes that you can identify it using about 10 or 12 different indicators. No one disputes that there's a huge difference between the moderate alienating parent and the severe one, and that the severe one almost always is delusional. He or she truly believes that they're protecting the child from some horrible guy. It's true paranoid delusion. If that's what you're dealing with, I defy you to find a clinical psychologist who thinks that they can work with someone who's got a sociopathic personality disorder with paranoid delusions and, you know, fixed paranoid ideas and so forth. So I think training would be my second solution. And I think my third solution, I don't think there are bad people, and I don't think most people are crooked or corrupt, I think there is some abuse, but I think that, I'll end with the way I started. You have a complex set of severe medical problems here, and there's been no medical input. And there has been clinical input, and I want to end by really saying, I'm not saying that you need a psychiatrist, absolutely not. What you need for all the mental health professionals to do is to start looking at some basic principles, and they can be taught, and they can be learned. It's not rocket science.
And I'm sorry, did you say you are a psychiatrist?
I am, I am not. I have a degree in psychology. I've done a lot of mental health work, but I'm, my original training is in internal medicine. I've done a lot of behavioral medicine. I used to run a forensic psych group, and, you know, I have a lot of other types of background in that area.
Thank you very much for coming.
Any other questions?
Ms. Veron.
Thank you for coming. And I did invite Dr. Miller because I read his book over and over again, and his, well, the chapter. And when you talk about subset, or is it subspecialties, what do you mean by that? Can you clarify that? Because what I hear from a lot of people that are ordered to go to therapy, co-parenting therapy, reunification therapy, couples counseling, and there's a lot of therapists out there that say they do, you know, when they're dealing with these high-conflict cases, they're really just working as a resource and not a, they're in a therapeutic sense, or they're consultants. That's like the new trend now, that they're considered consultants. So can you elaborate a little bit on that?
I'd be happy to. Good question. I think the best way to do that is to just give you a list of four or five things that are extremely counterintuitive, and explain why most mental health experts will probably go astray. The first, and I'll do this very quickly, I think I can do it in 90 seconds. First of all, and think how counterintuitive this is, in an alienation setting, most children will align with the abusive parent. It's like, you know, these kids that you find that have been living with their abductors for years, and then they resist capture, or Stockholm syndrome. Very counterintuitive. Number two, what we would call pathological enmeshment, and I'll define that briefly. It means that the alienating parent has an unhealthy enmeshment with the child, to the point where the child has lost his or her individuality. A severe erosion of critical reasoning skills, boundary violations, sleeping with the other parent, or at least doing the bidding of the other parent, inappropriate sharing of information, which all the lawyers have heard of. Pathological enmeshment is a very serious psychiatric problem. And to a non-expert, it looks exactly like a warm, close, loving, healthy relationship. The non-expert comes in with perhaps a PhD or an MD in psychiatry or psychology, and what they see is the, let's just say, mother and father for simplicity, but it's about a 50/50 spread of who does what these days. You know, the two little girls are tightly bound to the mother, "Oh, I love you, I love you, I love you." They look at dad and say, "I don't want to see him, he's a bad man. She's perfect, he's rotten." The non-expert says, "Wow, look at that great relationship." They really don't know how to probe to see if we have, there are three types of pathological enmeshment, infantilization, adultification, making them little adults. Why don't you decide if you want to see dad? Right there, that's adultification. Right there, that's pathological enmeshment. So I repeat, pathological enmeshment to a non-subspecialist, to an experienced forensic psychiatrist, looks just like a warm, healthy relationship. Okay, another thing that's counterintuitive is, well, I just said it. Who would think that a 65-year-old senior, well-respected forensic psychiatrist, forensic psychologist, would get this backwards, let alone wrong? 95 percent of the time, they will get it backwards because of the type of mistakes I've just mentioned. The, and I'm giving you the short version. This is even more so true, of course, of attorneys. If the psychiatrists and psychologists are getting it backwards 95 percent of the time, what chance does a non-clinician have, whether you call them a GAL or an MAC? I get called in, I've got cases now in about six or seven states where I've been asked to advise, and the pattern is identical in every case. You could have six experts against one parent, and then someone comes in from afar, I don't testify, by the way, for those cases are rarely, and the judge says, "Well, five of my own court-appointed experts say it's him. He's perfect, she's rotten." And then one expert comes in from God knows where, from Boston or California, and says, "No, no, it's, everyone's got it wrong." You lose, five to one. The judge is going to go with his own people. Two others, and I'll be done. There's something that the psychologists may be familiar with, so I'll glance at them, called the fundamental attribution error. It's a cognitive error. And I'll even say that I think one of the problems here is there are at least 10 cognitive errors that I discuss in the book, and then another 10 clinical errors that they lead to, that are made almost always by a non-expert. I don't even have to read the chart. I'm going to find all 20 of them right there. My favorite, though... My favorite, though, is the fundamental attribution error. I have an unpublished paper, I hope to get out this year, on that. And an attribution error means you look at some behavior and you assign what you think is the cause for it. For example, the three children say, "I hate Dad, I love Mom, I don't want to see him." The reason it's called the fundamental attribution error is that we're hardwired to make it. It's, even if I know I'm making it, I find it hard to override it. And what it is, is that you confuse something that is situational for something that is characterological or dispositional. In an alienation case, the alienating parent is probably, almost certainly, if it's severe, then the alienating parent, with 0.99% certainty, has a severe personality disorder. They're either borderline, a sociopath, a narcissist, or all three. Those are not mutually exclusive.
And, Doctor, I'm going to jump in here because I've actually lost track of whatever the question was that you were responding to, but it's--
Counterintuitive. And I'll bring it home for you.
Please.
I'm glad you, okay. So I'm going to illustrate an example of another thing that's counterintuitive, and this is a mistake that almost everyone will make. And I found myself making it today, and I'll explain in a moment. The fundamental attribution error means you look at behavior and you think it's, if you see an angry man, someone who's angry, you say, "He's an angry man." You think it's his character. In general, he's an angry man. Never mind that the reason he's angry is someone just stole his car or his wallet. You, we're hardwired to say, "Oh, I'm going to stay away from that guy, he's displaying anger." So if the anger is situational, then it's an error. Now, the relevance to us is that when an interviewer sees a severe case of alienation, the alienating parent is cool, calm, and collected. He or she is probably borderline, a sociopath, or a narcissist, or all three, and is a master manipulator, has learned to convincingly mimic normal behavior, and presents very well. "Oh, yes, I encourage the child's relationship with his father or his mother." By contrast, the targeted parent has PTSD, has not seen the child in God knows how long, maybe years, has been told that he's the one who's the problem, or she's the one, and comes in all intense, all angry, and all stressed out. Now, I personally sat through a whole course at an AFCC meeting where the person teaching the course said to the people in the group, "You can go by what you see. If the parent presents anxious and intense, you can be sure that's how they parent." No, that's an elementary error in clinical reasoning and decision-making, not if it's a fundamental attribution error. You're, okay, and that's how you leave the encounter thinking, "Well, it's her, not him, or it's him, not her."
Well, we're getting a little far afield from the issues before the task force. Are there any other questions by, any other members? Tom?
And I'm going to preface this by, you're a complex thinker, and that's wonderful.
But I've lost you all.
No, you know, maybe just me. When it comes down to alienation, and shared parenting, I think, ties into alienation, and I think it was Linda Smith at the GAL training that I was proctoring that said that alienation is incredibly complex. Yes, but it's overcome by access because it allows the child to have an ongoing relationship and establish their own understanding of both parents. And then the alienation effect is minimized. So while I think it's wonderful that you can kind of diagnose it, but you've actually just indicated that 99% of the experts that might be on a case would miss it. What we're looking at is the role of the GAL when they get in. A lot of these cases actually are resolved quickly. It's some of them that go two years, and only a small percentage of those are alienation. But from a GAL perspective, as they start to see something like this, their response, I would think, might defer to access when the children are of an age where they, like, at 15, it's one thing, but at, you know, 10, if they're saying, "I don't like one parent, and I want to be with the other parent," and you can't identify some corroborating evidence to support that, wouldn't you have some kind of access that, and you see how that child responds? That's, because it's got to be a little quicker and a little dirtier, I would think, for the court on some level. Does that make sense?
Makes perfect sense. I agree 100%, but I would like to expand just a little bit on what you said.
There you go.
You know, one of the previous witnesses said something to the effect of, "You have to do this on a case-by-case basis." In medicine, we teach students whether to be lumpers or splitters, you know? And if someone says they're an expert in wine, and then they don't know the different, you know, all they know is there's red and white, that's a problem. You have to ask, is this, how severe is this? What is the parent's capacity to co-parent? If you're dealing with the extreme right side of a continuum, where you have a severe personality disorder, obsessed alienator, the kids are severely alienated, the principle you gave is still correct. You want to maintain contact, but you must reverse custody. I don't know a single expert who believes that you can treat that on and out, you know, while they still live with the alienating parent. But that is a minority of the cases. In most cases, you're dealing with a more reasonable, middle-of-the-road situation. I think the court has to step in and enforce the parenting plan and have consequences when it's violated, and you're doing the child a favor. So I guess what I'm saying is that it depends. And just to conclude this, I think most experts don't understand that in the severe cases, reunification therapy never, ever works. It is a fool's errand. There is no recorded case ever in the literature of anyone taking a severe alienator. I'm stressing, I'm speaking only about the severe cases. You know, where mom hasn't seen the child in three years, Dad is, you know, not going to change, is obsessed. And you have to recognize that's what you're dealing with. But once you recognize that's what you're dealing with, most judges don't want to reverse custody. I get it, I wouldn't want to either. So once you really are sure this is what you're dealing with, then the appropriate thing is to reverse custody. There are two programs in the country, I should say, in North America, one in Canada, one in--
If I could interrupt you, because I know you're getting beyond--
Just give me 20 more seconds.
20 seconds.
All right, but just remember, we have a room full of people. We've already been here six and a half hours, and we have two-thirds of the list still to go.
And I have a stop.
I, yes. Literally, you can hold me to it.
16.
There are two places where in four days, they turn the worst cases around. There are two places, one in Canada, run by Kathleen Ray, another in Texas, run by Richard Warshak. Give them four days with the kid, and the kid returns to the rejected parent happy as a clam to be reunited. But they require a change in custody and no contact with the alienating parent for 90 days. Other than that, there is no hope for a severe case. Don't even think of doing it with office therapy.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
So when it comes to reunification therapy, in the state of Connecticut and throughout the country, there's a lot of court orders for reunification therapy for severe alienation. And there's a lot of money that's being made on behalf of this industry that is thinking that you're going to be able to reunify the children with the alienated parent. The court system, they don't even know about all of this stuff. And they're doing this, and there's mental health professionals who are naive to think that they can do it. They can't. So if there's, what's the solution?
I'll give you a short answer, I promise. I think you have to ask very carefully about severity, duration, and things like that. I think reunification therapy is an excellent thing to do. I do not want to be misinterpreted as having said it doesn't work in general. It doesn't work for the most severe cases. But there's something counterintuitive here. Normal psychotherapy makes these cases worse. So if it's a skilled psychotherapist who thinks you can come in and do dyadic therapy, well, why don't you find something to apologize for? Johnny, how did that make you feel? That's a disaster. Don't try that, even within medium case. They will almost always get catastrophically worse. So you have to match the therapist with the kid. That's my answer.